Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for five December twenty twenty-three. Let the records show they're missing one commissioner, Dr. Bear. First item this evening is pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening's meeting. Our next item is the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. There is a change to the Order of Business. Underneath Administration and Finance, we be adding item E, which would be the findings of fact, conclusion, and order of the demolition hearing of the property located at four oh five Second Avenue West, and that would be presented by Attorney Wanko.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the amended Order of Business? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on the amended Order of Business.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the amended Order of Business by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting for the amended Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? If there are no items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss, I'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move right on into Administration and Finance. First item up this evening is our Chapter Four Amendment to Legacy Square. This will be presented by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the November twenty-first City Commission meeting, changes were made, were approved for the twenty twenty-four Legacy Square concession liquor license. Those changes included a reduced minimum bid of three to three thousand dollars, a ten percent gross sales requirement for the awarded bidder, and two dollar risk bands for the event attendees that were going to be consuming alcohol. Due to the adjustments, those changes need to be reflected in ordinance four oh eight point oh six M eight. That ordinance change would read as follows. In addition to the bid price paid by the license pursuant to paragraph nine below, the studies shall also receive gross sales of alcohol sold at city sanctioned sponsored events in the amount to be determined by the City Administrator during the annual bidding process. The license shall be provided, provide documentation to the city upon the expiration of the annual license term to verify sale of that year. City staff recommends approval of first reading to this ordinance amendment.
Okay, this should be ordinance seventeen ninety, if I'm correct. So we're leaving the percentage fluid? We're not putting a number in there?
That is correct. Prior to the bid process for each year, if there's going to be a change, I'd bring that forward to the City Commission.
Okay.
I'd move to approve the amendments.
Okay, this is the reading of, first reading of seventeen ninety. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up, we have Black Market Vape and Smoke Dickinson. This is a license renewal. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have received a renewal application from Black Market Vape and Smoke Incorporated for the twenty twenty-four tobacco license. Black Market Vape is located at four fifty-six fifteen Street West, Suite C. They have been in business since December of twenty twenty-two. City staff has reviewed your application and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger or City Staff on this license renewal?
Mr. President, I'd moved to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up, we have an I ninety-four speed study presentation. This will be handled by our Economic Development Director, Skolczek.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll actually, actually handle that item this evening. If you remember, this summer, we had requests from several homeowners that live along I ninety-four to have speed limit reduced as motorists pass by the three exits along I ninety-four. At an August Commission meeting, approval was given to request the North Dakota Department of Transportation study on the possibility of slowing down the traffic through the area between those three exits on I ninety-four. We did receive results of that study, which were included in your packets, and were also reviewed by the engineering, our engineering staff. The North Dakota Department of Transportation is not recommending any changes at that time to the speed limit along I ninety-four between the three exits. City staff will take no further action on this unless otherwise directed by the, by the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger on the speed study? There are no questions. This is just a report, so we don't have to.
That is correct.
Okay, we'll move right into item D, which is our IT update, and this will be presented by IT Director Meyer. Welcome.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners.
For you, I have the IT update for twenty twenty-three. Within it, of course, we'll cover some of the various projects that we performed throughout the year. Of course, I have to start off with a huge shout out and a thank you to my team, without whom I wouldn't be able to accomplish many of the tasks that we are going to report about today. I know at the back of everybody's mind, we're of course thinking how the Munich Code project is going. We are in the middle of the review process. We've had the attorneys from Munich Code, of course, review this, turn it over to us, and we're currently reviewing it with some of the department heads to get some of the changes that need to be made to Attorney Wanko. These changes, of course, once they're, once they're prepared, will come before commission as a first draft, and then will become a final draft before becoming an online version of the code. Of course, we all know that this summer, we converted to the Munich Code Meetings platform, converted in June. That can be accessed at Dickinsongov.com slash meetings, where you can find the upcoming as well as the recent meetings and all the information contained within. As another part of this project, of course, we had the website conversion project for six major websites throughout the city, including the police, the fire, the museum, the library, downtown or Legacy Square, and the city main page. We, of course, completed that, that migration in October, and we haven't heard any negative complaints about it since. So I invite everybody to go out there and, and check it out. With the, the website project, of course, we have the document library that was implemented. It can be accessed at Dickinsongov.com slash documents. And within this, we, of course, have uploaded both minutes as well as plans and procedures that have been run through OCR technology to become fully searchable, to make it real easy if you want to look up all the meetings that contain dog parks and discussions upon that, that subject matter over the last twenty years or so. Now, Munich Code, of course, wasn't our only project. Some projects to note, of course, is out at the Public Works site from the Public Works Brian Facility to the water tank out there. We worked in conjunction with the Water Department, who have provided the trenching services, and then we laid in the conduit and the fiber optic with my team to accomplish this project for about five thousand dollars. On top of that, of course, we do our, our yearly maintenance. We did some maintenance on some antennas and some cameras on our intersections. We service about nine different intersections throughout the community, and this is in support of a project for the Police Department, which definitely benefits them. On top of that, of course, we went through our door access system conversion. We've converted the, the doors throughout the city. This project kind of started back in twenty twenty-one as we moved into the new city hall facility, and instead of bringing an old door access system into this building, we updated security procedures at around a thousand dollars a door versus having to install the old system at four thousand dollars for, per door for our subpar system. We, of course, brought the mausoleum online this, this summer, including three electronic doors and fifteen cameras installed throughout. Of course, our prior, uh, post-camera project also came online this summer, kind of in in reaction to some vagrant and some vandalism style activities that were taking place in the, in the park. On the backend of things, of course, we have our Illumio Network Segmentation Project. That project is a grant-funded project. We received about thirty-three thousand dollars worth of grant funding from state and federal. It's currently deployed to about two hundred and seventy-five different endpoints, and over the past couple of months, we've analyzed over two hundred thousand network, network connections, and so it's a really neat tool and it's really beneficial for our team. In addition to that, we deployed Nessus Tenable, which is a vulnerability scanning software, which is state-funded software. It's currently deployed across our endpoints, and it provides us with a four percent endorph discount when we install that, along with the endpoint protection provided by the state. It also, by analyzing these vulnerabilities, that allows us to patch, and we patched over three thousand vulnerabilities since May. We, of course, have an ongoing project for automated software deployment, and this, this project allows us to re-image computers in a more efficient manner, as well as to automate our software installs and our patching throughout the city, and also provides us with consistent or rapid deployment. In addition to that, we converted our IT help desk so that it would be more integrated with many of the software we use throughout the city. As many of you know, back in twenty eighteen, I created the Timekeeping Project. The Timekeeping Project over the past year has been evolved and rebranded as our employee portal, known as X S U. Up on the screen, you can see the many modules contained within X S U. The ones marked in green are brand-new modules that came out this year, and the ones marked in yellow are modules that received a significant updates over the past year. Some more projects to know, as many of us know, Town Square came online this, this summer as well. We, of course, installed underground fiber optic to there. We installed guest Wi-Fi, city Wi-Fi, cameras, indoor controllers in that space. On top of that, we, of course, installed the, the the sound system training with our, with our users, and kind of went through that with the, with the service tech says that equipment was installed. On top of that, we went through the training for the electronic screens, so we could support staff in that manner as well. We, of course, have our, our smaller maintenance projects as well as just smaller projects in general. One, of course, being our computer replacement project, where we are about ninety percent of the way completed for this year, which should wrap up by, by the end of December. We also are about eighty percent of the way through our city Wi-Fi update project. On top of that, we've added some cameras at the library, as well as added an information screen, kind of advertising project over there that replaces an old, old screen technology that was, that was brought about during the era of COVID. On top of that, we integrated V, which is our permitting project tracking software, with GIS working in conjunction with Darrow from the GIS Department to incorporate in our cemetery data with his maps for the cemeteries. That way, it allows for real-time data changes that affect the maps in real time as well. And finally, this year, we implemented a storage area network install, and the storage area network contains sixty terabytes worth of shared storage. It allows for high availability kind of data transfers between a couple of our virtual host servers. In doing so, we, of course, restructured our server room to kind of accommodate this and allow us to update these systems with little to no downtime for our, our staff. This project cost us about eighty-five, five, eighty-five thousand dollars, and it was well within budget. Finally, we, of course, updated all of our servers to operating system twenty nineteen, and we will begin the upgrades to twenty twenty-two, starting in twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any questions for Mr. Meyer on the IT report? Guys are staying busy. That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Great work. All right, we'll go into item E, our findings of fact, and this was from a hearing that was held earlier today, and this will be presented by City Attorney Wanko.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Unfortunately, this is not going to be as exciting as the IT updates, so we'll have to just make do, I guess. As you were present this afternoon at three o'clock, the city held a demolition hearing to determine whether the structures located at four oh five Second Avenue West in Dickinson should be demolished. Pursuant to that hearing, there was a vote by the commission to proceed forward with the determination that that property is considered to be a dangerous structure and should be demolished pursuant to city code. This commission is required by code to submit written findings of its determination. So I have prepared in front of you findings of fact, conclusions, and an order that would need to be reviewed and approved. Essentially, what this does, it reiterates the evidence that was submitted by the city this afternoon. It also makes a finding that the city has found this property to be a dangerous structure and that it needs to be demolished. And as we previously discussed at the prior hearing, the order that would be issued upon approval of these documents would be that the property would be demolished, that, of course, the order may be appealed to the District Court within thirty days, and based on the discussions that we had with the legal counsel at Penny Mac, Penny Mac would have the ability within the thirty-day appeal period to submit demolition bids and a demolition permit to the city, along with a proposed timeline for completion of demolition. If they fail to do that, fail to submit the demolition bid, the building, the demolition permit, or the proposed timeline, that the city would have the ability to proceed forward after that thirty-day appeal period and do it itself. And then, of course, if for whatever reason, the city is responsible for doing the demolition pursuant to code, those costs get assessed back to the property. So I would stand for any questions or any additional comments. If everything appears to be in order, I would ask the commission to approve and have the mayor sign the order.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wanko. Any questions on the findings of fact presented to the City Commission? Now I'd look for a motion on the findings of facts, conclusions, and order to demolish the property at four oh five Second Avenue West, Dickinson, North Dakota.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move right into Public Works. We have a Burns McDonald agreement for the Baylor Building expansion. This will be presented by Deputy Public Works Director Prowse.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you tonight to present an agreement for professional services between the City of Dickinson and Burns McDonald to provide engineering services through the duration of the Baylor Building expansion project. There are six phases to this project that include the study and report, preliminary design, final design, bidding and negotiations, construction, post-construction. This agreement does not include any geotechnical investigations, as I was working with the city engineer to do that with an outside source through the city. There's been one change to the agreement since it's been presented in your packet. Just this morning, there was an increase to liability, liability insurance limits from three million to five million. That addition will cost the city an additional fifteen thousand dollars for that insurance increase, which will bring the total cost of this agreement to nine hundred and one thousand dollars. Of the nine hundred and one thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of the total amount is for the construction and post-construction phases. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we had twenty, fifty thousand dollars was budgeted for the conceptual design phase, which was completed in August of twenty twenty-three and presented. An additional seven hundred was budgeted from GPT fund this year in twenty twenty-four to continue to proceed with the final design and construction phases of this project. City staff and Attorney Wanko has reviewed the agreement and recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions for Mr. Prowse or City Staff on this agreement? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Next up, we have public safety and their monthly fire report, and this is, says Chief Presnell, but he looked taller than he is, so.
A little bit. He wasn't able to make it tonight. I'll be presenting him for the Fire Department. Just presenting the October report for the Fire Department. Got a couple of photos here to kind of make note of. This is one that we, we did the breakfast this year for the community. It was a free breakfast that we provided, and we did serve over four hundred people at that event, so it's kind of a nice way to give back to the community and meet people and see what our station looked like.
A nice event.
This is just more for the public, just showing our, our services that we provide, of course, fire profession, fire suppression, emergency medical, fire prevention, and the, the regional response. Overview for October, we had a hundred and sixty-six calls for service. Brings us up to seventeen thousand, or seventeen hundred sixty-four calls for the year to date, which is about a sixteen percent increase. This is a breakdown of calls by month. You can see we kind of stabilized a little bit, but we do have a an increase over, over the twenty-one, twenty-two, we're kind of balancing out there a little bit, but we'll see how things come here at the end of the year. Breakdown by call types. Again, we got sixty-six percent in EMS, twenty-two in false alarm, good intent, four percent were fire calls, and we had eight percent were hazardous calls. This is our calls by apparatus. You can see there's a little bit of an increase with the engine compared to the, the QRUs. That was due to the fact of fire prevention and our trucks being at the schools and the really nice weather we had in October. We were able to do a lot of training at the training site, so there was a lot, a few more calls being handled by the apparatus. Calls by the station, about sixty-eight percent of them are still being, coming out of the Station One, the downtown station, thirty-two percent from up north. And this being the, the heat map kind of showing the general area, as you can see, is quite spread out and and to have calls ranging throughout the whole community. With our response times, we were able to be below the recommended response times in October. Station One being at five fourteen, and Station Two, we in at five ten, where the recommended is five twenty. Company training hours at the end of October. You can see we're about ninety-five percent complete. Just short a little bit on company training. Of course, that comes month by month, but we're well on our way to, to meet our goals in, in company training hours. Fire prevention activities, only forty-four routine inspections. That's because we had a hundred and seventy-one fire prevention activities with Fire Prevention Week. Of that a hundred and seventy-one, we saw a hundred and fifty classrooms in schools. Almost twenty-eight hundred students we were able to visit in that, in that two weeks of fire prevention. We also have another big event called Neighborhood Visits, where we take our fire trucks to the park and let the community see our fire trucks and see our firefighters, give them a ride around the neighborhood, and there was about two hundred and fifty or so people that came to that. Surprising with the absolutely horrible weather we had that night. That was that terrible windstorm and rain that came through that night. We also had Trick or Trunk, as you can see that photo there. I don't know the count on that. There was a lot of people that came to see us that night. It was quite enjoyable. And we had just one certificate of occupancy that was completed in the month of October. With that, I would take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Deputy Chiefs Selly? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move right into community development, readiness center rezone. This will be presented by Director Skolczek.
City Planner Galliburton is going to be presenting.
Okay. Well, my thing, I'm just reading what my thing says, just going by the script, you know.
Fair enough. So thank you, President, President Decker and City Commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Galliburton. I'm the City Planner. The petition being considered here is REZ dash zero zero seven dash twenty twenty-three for the rezone of a property legally described as lot one, block one, energy center, third edition, from general industrial to public. So this is the second reading at City Commission for final approval, and should be considered as mutually dependent with the following application on today's agenda, which is FLM dash zero zero two dash twenty twenty-three, to consider changing the land use designation for this property on the future land use map from industrial to civic slash public. So back to the current application on hand, R Z zero square seven. The property where the new, where the new North Dakota National Guard Readiness Center is currently being constructed is owned by the City of Dickinson. The City of Dickinson staff has been in discussions with North Dakota National Guard about the city's proposal for a public safety training facility on the western portion of the property. The intent is for the North Dakota National Guard and the City of Dickinson Public Safety Departments to utilize the other's facilities, providing mutual benefit. So both the North Dakota National Guard Readiness Center and the proposed public safety training facility would be best suited in the proposed zoning district as public. Staff has reviewed the surrounding general industrially zoned area and has determined that approval of both this rezone petition and the accompanying future land use map amendment is unlikely to result in any adverse impact to future industrial and build opportunities and further development of the area. So as the, as of the time of this report, staff has received no public comment and recommends approval of the application, subject to concurrent approval of the following application for the future land use map amendment.
Thank you, Mrs. Gallbert. This is ordinance seventeen eighty-eight, and it's also, as reported, it is, if you look at the motion in the staff report, this is F M L dash zero two dash twenty twenty-three, so. But we'll go by ordinance seventeen eighty-eight for the motion. So are there any questions for City Staff on the rezone, readiness center rezone? Now I'd look for a motion on seventeen eighty-eight.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We also have the Readiness Center Future Land Use Map, which is ordinance seventeen eighty-nine, as, as explained, Mrs. Gallbert. So are there any questions for City Staff on the future land use amendment, I guess it would be, which is ordinance seventeen eighty-nine?
Mr. President, I'd move to approve seventeen eighty-nine.
I have a motion to approve seventeen eighty-nine by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. It is five o'clock, so that is public hearing and public comments time. This evening, we don't have any public hearings. So if anyone from the public wishes to come forward, state their name, and bring any items to the City Commission's attention that are not on the agenda, you are welcome. You can also call in at seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six. Anyone have any items they wish to discuss with the City Commission? Anything not on the city agenda? Seeing and hearing no one. Seeing and hearing no one has any items to discuss, I'll close the public hearing. We will move back to let's see, we are now into the water main and lead service line replacement project and this'll this, well, you'll be presenting this one now. All right, Director Skolzacek will be presenting the water main lead service line replacement project, S I D creation.
Good evening, Mr. President. Commissioners, uh included in your packet is a preliminary engineering report for the twenty twenty-four water main and lead service line project, city project number twenty twenty-four zero two and special improvement district number twenty twenty-four zero two dash one. The S I D and paving portion of this project is intended to be paid for through the road maintenance project funds and uh the water main, the water main and and uh service line replacements are are intended to be paid through the um respective project. In this case, both of these projects were approved in the twenty twenty-four capital improvement project budget. The twenty twenty-four water main and lead service line replacement project includes Fifth Avenue West from Velard to Second Street West, um Sixth and Seventh Avenues West from Velard to Fourth Streets West. As part of the project, uh uh street improvements were also identified, um largely due to the 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 uh concrete and curb and gutter sidewalks and things like that that uh are in poor condition. And then ultimately, um the number of cuts to the street will will leave um the quality of the actual pavement uh something less than desirable, so the intent to do in the middle and overlay at that time and uh concluding the project uh more holistically is the intent. The overall S I D uh is accordance with the special uh assessment policy, which has been approved from resolution thirty-nine dash two thousand and nineteen and um which was approved by the city commission in December seventeenth, twenty nineteen. And uh that policy ultimately gives the authority to the city to assess for construction of sidewalks, curb and gutter and driveway aprons in conjunction with street maintenance project. And uh this is, this project is scheduled for the construction season of twenty twenty-four and uh we intend to have a bid opening anticipated for March of twenty twenty-four. And the uh preliminary opinion of construction costs for the street improvement portion uh with the S I D is included at six hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cents and city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for city staff on the S I D?
After this, the landowners will be notified?
Yeah, we'll have the landowner notifications going out. We're actually prepping the letters right now in anticipation for uh tonight's approval of the special improvement district. And then um and then from there, that we have a public engagement meeting uh listed in that letter and uh I can't recall the exact date, it's early January, so uh we're gonna use the commission chambers for for that meeting. And um and ultimately, that in that letter, they'll be include the the cost estimate for each individual property owner, show the map of which sidewalk, uh driveways, uh curb and gutter, things like that, that intend to be replaced with the project. And um and then ultimately follow through the as per century code and as per uh city code on on uh the process for the special improvement district, so.
And the letter, does it state to the option that the property owner can um opt to make these corrections on their own?
Specific to the sidewalk, I believe, yes. I I'd have to check on the curb and gutter. I'm not sure if that's an option or not. I'm not aware of that, but but I I can look into that.
Um I think we have given them those options before. Yeah, that they can fix all of it, so.
I'll double check that and make sure. We're working on also included for the public engagement meeting, like a frequently asked questions, things that we would anticipate if we were the property owners, for example. And um and so I'll make sure I include that in that frequently asked questions document so that uh that's available for the public engagement meeting.
Because I think we have given them the option before, once it's been identified that their their curb and gutter and their sidewalk need replacing, that they can opt to fix it on their own, get their own bid and fix it. Uh at least during that time period. Um not to interfere with, I guess, our construction or our water replacement too.
Guess I'm not sure about the curb and gutter though.
I thought we had before.
I mean, that would al- that would almost have to be all poured at one time, you know.
I'll I'll recheck on the resolution that was previously passed, as well as um in chapter two, there's there's some specific information on special improvement districts. I'll I'll refer to both of those and and make sure again in the frequent ask questions document that that's available, so.
Sounds good.
All right, this is resolution thirty-five dash twenty twenty-three. Any further questions for city staff? Now I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Soboluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, we have a N D D O T urban maintenance uh form. Again, this will be presented by Dec- uh Director Skolzacek.
Good evening, President Decker and Commission. Uh so before you is the North Dakota Department of Transportation um annual urban federal aid project uh maintenance certification and uh included with it is is just a a standard form. It has a few signatures on it and it's um basically just an acknowledgement that we are in fact maintaining the infrastructure that has uh federal aid associated with the projects and so uh that includes all the aspects that that we ultimately work towards as far as uh having our road maintenance funds and um uh preparing what's what's nearing completion on our our uh pavement management plan and those kind of things, so uh engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this agreement or in the maintenance form with North Dakota Department of Transportation? Look for a motion on this urban maintenance form.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up. Again, Josh, you have the urban area boundary resolution.
Good evening, once again, Mr. President. Commissioners, the update to the urban area boundary, uh this boundary designation is with the Federal Highway Administration and it it ultimately takes into account the uh twenty twenty census data. Um the data, there was a long lag in in when the data became available. We we first became aware of this um earlier in two thousand twenty-three. First received some of the preliminary mapping information. Included in your packet shows um not only the data, the the um kind of hatched areas or or shaded areas that are in a peachish color, those are the areas designated with census uh data with enough population to um that were strongly recommended that those areas be included within our urban area boundary. Um and that likely development or future annexations may move in that direction. Um there was a number of other criteria as far as not splitting roadways in half and and um uh make sure your entire city limits boundary was included within the area. Uh this has been kind of a back and forth uh series of of discussions and submittals with the North Dakota Department of Transportation, which was then approved by the Federal Highway Administration and um and ultimately, um you can see there there's a separate, in your packet, there's a separate pa- uh map that shows the existing urban area boundary versus the proposed. And um with that, engineering staff recommends approval and uh stand for any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Skolzacek. Any questions on this urban area boundary resolution? And this should be resolution thirty-six, twenty twenty-three.
I do have a question on this one. So we're increasing the boundaries but not increasing our actual municipality. It's just like this would be areas that would be for future development or other things it's saying. It's not.
Yep, e- exactly. So it doesn't even increase anything as far as we're not obligated to anything maintenance wise unless the specific roadway is a classified roadway with the Federal Highway Administration. So in the case of thirtieth avenue, um that's included within our federal classifications and then we have a maintenance agreement in place with the D O T and with the county that we have to maintain outside of city limits. So in that case, it it's in our best interest to include that within the urban area boundary. We might as well utilize the federal dollars when available, when maintenance is needed on the that roadway segment. But no, it doesn't obligate us to any future expansion expectations or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd look for a res- um a a motion on resolution thirty-six dash twenty twenty-three.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Soboluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And our last item up this evening, we have an E B L N H U dash five oh nine four, a bid uh concurrence with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. Mr. Skolzacek.
Good evening again, Mr. President. Commissioners, uh for your consideration is a bid concurrence letter from the North Dakota Department of Transportation to accept the bid for the project to perform micro-surfacing, micro-surfacing for the Interstate ninety-four east business route um from Tenth Avenue East to the I ninety-four interchange. Uh this is city of Dickinson, project number twenty twenty-three thirty-two. This project is scheduled to be executed during the twenty twenty-four construction season. And um the bid was a uh bid was at uh six hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred one dollars and seventy-two cents. The contractors Asphalt Surfacing Technologies Corporation of Saint Paul, uh Saint Cloud, Minnesota and the D O T completed the bidding for this project through their procurement processes. The city's cost participation is approximately ten percent of the bid amount and um with the twenty twenty-four capital improvement project, at that time, we had estimated approximately a hundred thousand dollars for the project, our allocation, so um so this approximate ten percent will come in fair bit under underestimate, so um the the acknowledgement of the bid because we have a cost share is um is what the D O T is looking for, so. Uh which is why they require the bid concurrence, so uh engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skolzacek. Um any questions on this agreement with North Dakota D O T and this micro-surfacing? This will be resolution thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-three. Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Soboluk. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And that is the conclusion of our regular agenda. Commissioners, this is your time. If there's anything you wish to bring up before the public or to the commission, please do so. Hearing no discussion, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.